All right, let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. Welcome to the Delaware County Council Meeting, January 28. And we will start off with the pledge of allegiance. Everybody please stand. Steve, you will lead us.
Sure.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pass your seat belts, please. Trades in seats in the upright position. Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we've got the volume in order. Can we get a roll call, please? Mr. Ballard.
Here.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Here.
Ms. Chambers.
All right.
Ms. Lassiter.
Here.
Ms. Piper.
Here.
Lincoln Bush. Mr. Alexander.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Denise was the agenda posted?
Yes.
You have all legal notices for the meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Need an approval of the agenda?
I'll move.
Second.
Have an approval or a motion from Jessica, second, from Ryan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. I want to just make a couple of comments. I want to go ahead and in advance thank county council members for their commitment to this. We've got a lot of experienced people up here. We've done a good job over a long number of years of getting to this point. And as we discussed in December, there were some things, some issues that are ongoing that were out of our control from the city of Muncie. One of those being the 911 communication issue. And I'd like some help from council members on urging the commissioners to continue moving forward that as quickly as possible and let's get the city and county back to the table to try and get that issue resolved. The EMS issue that's still out there, we want to continue working. A lot of us have been meeting with the city to try and get some resolution there. And another one towards the end of the year that we should keep our eyes on is at the sometime towards the end of the year, we're going to be making a move out to the jail with the new department, so we'll need to keep our eyes on that as well. Also want to thank the auditor's office for all the work that they do on an ongoing basis between the meetings. It's another good experienced group of people that keep us on the right track. Anybody else, any other council members have any other comments, open comments you'd like to make or?
One thing that, I don't know if this is the right time, but I'm going to go ahead and say it.
Okay.
One thing that we've been kind of looking at is doing a little bit more oversight when it comes to grant funding and trying to track that money and where it goes. The other thing that we're looking at doing as well is, is when it comes to reimbursements, when department heads come up here and they say that we're going to be reimbursed 50% when it comes to that funding, I think the council is starting to want to have some type of proof of that, showing that the reimbursements are coming in. Not saying that anybody's not telling us the truth, I just want a paper trail personally. So.
But I think that at Finance Committee meeting, we discussed that a little bit with the auditor. As a matter of fact, Steve brought it up and I think we're going to look to your office to maybe help us come up with a plan on, we don't want to create any more work than for you guys and we have to, but we think, we agree that it's important. And Jenny, thank you for talking with the commissioners on that and getting their blessing on that. There's an email sent out. All three commissioners are in approval of us putting in some oversight there too. So. All right, with that, anything else? Okay, let's move on to the approval of minutes.
Move for approval.
Second.
That's the approval of November 26 and December 10. Motion from Larry, second, from Jessica. Any discussion, changes in the minutes? Okay. Roll call, please. Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
I approve on November the 26th, but I abstain on December the 10th.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Just for everybody's, for all the council members on this, I guess, I've talked with the auditor's office between the last meeting and this meeting and what we've decided to do is to go ahead and do the transfers first, you have the transfer addendum first, and then, you know, those that are here for transfers can get back to work and then we'll do the financial agenda. That normally takes a little extra time. I think at this time, based on some of these things that we've discussed earlier, we need to instruct the department heads to be frugal at this point with your budgets. We're probably going to be very hesitant to approve any additional appropriations throughout the rest of the year and try to maintain at or below your budget amounts. We would appreciate that. And with that, Donna, do you want to go ahead and start on the transfers?
Regular transfer addendum, commissioners, 126 VA Education Officer. That figure is now minus 29,307.72 into 198 part-time, which would be plus 29,307.72.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Larry, is that right? Second by Jessica. Roll call, please. Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Court, A 104 head bookkeeper, minus 31,962.56, B 104 head bookkeeper, plus 31,962.56, C 116 deputy clerk, minus 28,772.12, D 116 deputy clerk, plus 28,772.12, A 118 deputy clerk. The new figure is now minus 27,938.27, B 118 plus deputy clerk is now plus 27,938.27, D 119 minus 27,873.55, E 118 deputy clerk, plus 27,873.55, total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Jessica, second, from Ryan. Any discussion on that? Roll call. Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Jail, C 124, minus 33,492, D 124, plus 33,492. The next one should say, C 120, minus 33,492, and the next one should say, D 120, plus 33,492, total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Jessica, second, from Ryan. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Sheriff, 142 deputy, minus 42,809, A 142, plus 42,809, A 131 deputy, minus 31,000, B 131 deputy, plus 41,000, total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Jessica, second, from Jane. Okay. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Public defender, B 162, minus 28,000, C 162, plus 28,000, 180 administrative assistant, minus 600, 198 part-time, plus 600, total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Larry, second, from Jessica. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Your addendum, transfer, communication center, A 122, minus 36,121, B 122, plus 36,121, total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Jessica, second, from Ryan.
Ryan.
Ryan? That's what I said.
I heard Brian.
Oh.
Here we go again.
Maybe it was. We'll find out on the playback. Anyway, Ryan, there is no Brian. Okay, any discussion on that? Roll call, please. Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Jail, the first one should say, A 148, minus 32,590.40, B 148, plus 32,590.40, E 140, minus 33,376.07, F 140, plus 33,376.07, total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Jessica and second from Ryan.
Ryan or Jane.
Okay, let's go, let's go Ryan. That would be my mistake, I heard him first.
You're Janet.
Ryan or Janet.
You missed one.
Okay. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
911, B 102 supervisor, minus 37,225.97, C 102 supervisor, plus 37,225.97, total request zero.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Motion from Jane, second from Jessica. Any discussion on that? Roll call, please. Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Okay, regular agenda.
Well, just to let the audience know, I know there's not a lot of discussion out there. These, at this point, have gone through auditor's office and charged, looked at them, they've gone through Finance Committee, and generally, mostly, these are transfers with somebody leaving a job and a new person coming in, taking over that position. Go ahead.
Okay. Delaware County Council, 370 vehicle lease, $5,332, 444 vehicles, $24,369, total request 29,701.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, our motion by Larry, second by Jessica. This one's going to require a little explanation. First, let me let you guys know how we got here. In November, I think it was last year, Marta came to us and the vehicle that's currently being driven by the building commissioner is a 2002 and requiring lots of repairs all the time. There's breakdowns and issues. She originally came to us with a request at Finance Committee of $10,000 to buy a used vehicle with 80,000, 90,000 miles on it. So we asked at Finance Committee if she would go back and take a look at both the lease purchase and then also an outright purchase. Finance Committee kind of took a look at those options. By going ahead and doing this now and paying for the vehicle in full, we save a couple, a little over a couple thousand dollars by doing that now versus going with the lease option on that. So the recommendation from Finance would be to go ahead and purchase, but certainly, if you have any questions, Marta can answer them.
Right. And the way I filed the request, not knowing which way the council might want to go, the 5,000 whatever is for the lease, the 24,369 is for the purchase. So if you, if council agrees with the Finance Committee, then basically my request get, the overall 29,000 whatever request gets reduced by 5,330 whatever. The request was in the...
5,230.
Yeah, right. So it would end up being just 24,369. And I might say that if council does approve that, that we will, I know it'll be maybe a couple of weeks before we could...
Months, not weeks.
How mu...
It'll be a couple of months where you can get to have them.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Because Tom was telling me that when he goes out on inspections, he can't turn the car off because it won't start. All right, okay.
This early in the year, the state won't approve appropriations until the accident, which is Martin.
Okay. Well, we'll deal. So, but anyway, we would continue to see if we could find something even better than 24,369, so.
I'd like to amend my motion to approve the motion for purchase of 24,369.
Second.
Okay, got a motion to amend from Larry and a second from Ryan. Is there any discussion, any more questions on that?
We hit it finance-wise.
What's that?
I think we went over this pretty good during Finance.
Okay. And we need to vote on the amendment or?
He just amended his motion. Second agreed, then you can go ahead and approve it as he...
Okay.
I agree. As the second the first time.
Okay, all right. Okay, so we have a motion to approve, amended motion to approve at 24,369. Somebody clear on that? Okay, roll call. Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Martin. Larry, roll.
Larry, Jessica, because she was the second to the original, so.
She's the original second.
Yep. Missed community fund, 196 holiday, 5,000, 171,550, 241 supplies, 50,000, 371 contracts, 5,000, 362 equipment repairs, 20,000, 441 equipment, 75,000, total request 155,500.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Jessica, second from Ryan. Isn't that any discussion on that? Roll call. Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Sex offender, found 200, supplies, 5,000, 311, or 300, found computer, 5,000, total request 10,000.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, second by Ryan. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Sales disclosure, 393 schooling, 3,000, 441 copiers, 3,790, total request 6,790.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Jessica, second from, is that Larry?
Larry.
All right. Let's why I put Jane in between you guys.
And we're still have control.
I know. It's not, it's not the first and it won't be the last. Any discussion on that? All in favor? Or, excuse me, sorry, roll call. Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Reassessment, 172 per, 900, total request 900.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, second by Ryan. Any discussion? Roll call. Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Comprehensive plan, 310 professional services, 98,500, 323 travel, 3,500, 331 print, 3,000, 391 dues and subscription, 6,000, 393 schooling, 5,000, 395 public meetings, 500, 441 machinery and equipment, 5,000, 444 vehicles, 23,000, total request 144,500.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Jessica, second by Ryan. Marta, do you want to kind of explain a little bit about this for the council's benefit and maybe the audience as well?
Yes. The comprehensive plan fund is one that was created several years ago and it's a, it is a cash fund and it is also a fund that I use for activities that are reimbursable through indot and federal highway for our federal transportation planning activities. And the, I usually get it appropriated at the beginning of each year. This year is a little bit less than in the past and that is because since it's a cash fund that gets re, that receives reimbursements, 80% reimbursements, it, you know, continues to decrease. So the, my, what I submit for appropriation reflects the cash and anticipated revenue for the fund. The professional services, which is the largest line item, is, will be used for consulting services and also for a Ball State graduate assistant. We, almost every year, we have sponsored graduate assistantship with Ball State's College of Architecture and Planning. The, I've also used this cash fund and then the next one, the GIS map fund, to put in some money there to help us upgrade our computers and that, by using these two funds to do that, I won't be able to do them all, but I can start doing part of them. It keeps me from having to go to the general fund to do computer upgrades, which are needed because of the new operating systems, the software that's no longer supported, and all of the changes that IT and Jim Pluck's people are going to be doing this year, so.
All right. Any other questions? We got a motion, a second on that. Okay, all right. Roll call, please. Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
What we're discussing, some vehicle thing. Of what we're discussing is, she has to wait until after the abstract and steps down to buy that first vehicle. What she, she could buy now some of this money here and then we can always want that abstract.
It's not reimbursable though. It's not reimbursable. The purchase of a building commissioner vehicle isn't reimbursable.
But what was this vehicle for?
That's for our traffic count program.
I was just thinking if you went and bought it out here, you could go ahead and do it and not have to wait for a couple of months, but...
But yeah, it, the purchase for that, the building commissioner vehicle is not reimbursable, so, yeah. I wouldn't be able to put money back into the comp plan fund if I did that. I wouldn't be able to put money back into the comp plan fund if I did that. I guess unless I came back to council and transferred money from 148 to...
You could, when the county general does get approved, then you could give us a claim. We could move the money from county general.
Okay.
Back to your corporate, to replenish that account.
Okay.
I just, I couldn't remember what this...
Yeah.
If you're buying another new vehicle out of here.
That's for traffic.
And I couldn't remember what it was for, so, I mean if...
That's a thought. That's a good thought.
Yeah, so keep that in mind because once council approves this, this doesn't have to go to the state.
Right.
And the other one, you're going to wait till at least March.
Okay. Because I'm sure that in the...
If that's, if that's fine with you guys, I mean...
Yeah, that's okay with you.
She has enough cash, she's got 80,000 cash in that fund. And even though this requests for a lot more than that, that's based on her anticipated revenue coming through the year.
Right.
But right now, as far as cash, she would have enough to spend that 20,000 instead of waiting for at least two months to get her money.
Which is good because that would save me probably a couple of towing bills that...
That's just a suggestion for you guys, if you, if you approved for her to do that, I mean, then when the state does approve that appropriation, we can...
Make the transfer.
Yeah. Write a claim, actually write a check out of county general and reimburse her comprehensive plan for that vehicle.
Do you need an approval from council today?
Well, I don't know, I really do, but I wanted you guys to note that was a, I mean, you've already approved your appropriation of that.
Yeah.
So...
Well, I mean, given the condition of the...
We can shut the vehicle off.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Probably still running.
I know.
Honestly, it's not real great to have the builder out on inspections and have issues with the vehicle.
I know.
It doesn't let the county look good either, so.
I know.
I'd be okay with that. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
That'd be great. Thank you, Donna.
Thanks for working that out.
I just...
And Steve.
You know, I'm thinking about it, okay. GIS map, 241 computer support, $4,674, 310 professional services, $83,340, 323 travel, 5,000, 331 printing, 5,500, 393 schooling, 5,000, 441 computer GIS equipment, 5,000, total request 108,514.
Move to approve.
I was going to say, don't make me say.
I'll say it. I do have some discussion.
Yep. Marta, I've got a motion from Jessica, second from Ryan.[1717.33] Any discussion? Go ahead.
What I wanted to ask you was, obviously, we had talked about in finance, the beacon cost has gone up.
Right.
Is, I mean, it's going to every year. Is it going to go up two grand every year? Do you have any kind of an estimate as to what's going to happen there?
We don't really, but I will tell you that if we had, uh, the cost for beacon was $1,000 a month for five or six years. So, it, this is like the first increase. So, I don't think, no, I don't think it's going to be an every-year thing. And so what I've got in here should probably be good for at least three years, I, I would imagine.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Uh, unsafe building fund, 310 recording fees, $100. 364 unsafe building, 21,000. Total request, 21,100. Go ahead.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Larry, second by Jessica. Get that right. Any discussion on that? Do you want to give us a brief explanation on that one?
Right. This also is a cash fund, and the appropriation reflects the available cash balance. And it is used for the building commissioner to do demolitions or do securing of structures that are unsafe because windows, doors, whatever, are open. And it, he's currently looking at a couple of different properties, one on 26th Street and one in Oakville, trying to deal with getting those fixed. It, you deal a lot with the owner at first, trying to get the owner to do the right thing. And then ultimately, if it remains a problem, we would call an unsafe hearing authority meeting, which is the commissioners. And they basically act like the, like a court, and, and, and they issue orders like they would order that they do something, and if they don't, the owner doesn't do it, then they're in contempt. And, or they could order that it be demolished. And this fund pays for the costs associated with trying to solve unsafe building issues. One thing I will say, we have found that some of the biggest problems out there are probably junk vehicles, because when you have an unsafe building, chances are, you're going to have also some junk vehicles laying around on the property. And we, I currently do not have money in the budget, and so I'm, I'm trying to figure out a few different ways where I can get some money to address the junk vehicle issue, because we have to, we would have to pay for towing. And, but it's a whole process. But I'm thinking, usually I would have transferred, I have $5,000 in my regular general fund budget for unsafe buildings, and I usually would transfer that into this fund. What I'm thinking is, maybe I won't transfer all of it, maybe I'll save some of it to do junk vehicles. And just so you know, if, if I decide to do that, then I don't want to have to, I don't want to lose that money out of my regular general fund budget, because it's all going toward good causes.
I didn't force a junk vehicle, and it's going to get one of your own.
Good point, but we're fixing that. That's why I haven't done anything yet.
Toe for two, or maybe two.
The other thing, too, is when you guys spend money out and out on properties, then a lien is put against the, the property in an attempt to collect that.
Right.
If it, if it transfers beyond that, so.
Exactly.
Okay, any more questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
DMS, excuse me, ambulance replacement fund, 441 ambulance rechassis, Total request, 134,337. Ms. Tippred.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, second by Ryan. Any discussion? Well, I guess we will have some discussion on that. This is, uh, Jason, go ahead. We covered this in finance. It was approved in finance committee. Want to just tell everybody what you're doing real quick?
Sure. This is a rechassis of an ambulance to bring it up to the triple K standard. The reason, and I know there was some question, the last couple that we've done, the reason that the price has increased by about $40,000 is the auto-loading system. And the whole purpose of the auto-loading system is to save our employees from physical injury. We used to have to actually pick the patients up off the ground, put them on the cot, two-man lift the cot into the back of the ambulance. And since that time, obviously, they've come up with some hydraulic stretchers, and, and we went to those several years ago. That has cut down on work with comp claims. And now we are implementing the auto-loading system, which essentially the, the truck hooks, hooks the stretcher and it picks it up and puts it into the cot, so, or into the ambulance. So essentially, it reduces the amount of physical, physically picking people and equipment up significantly, so.
Is, is this the, the, is this going to be required at some point?
It is. Indiana is one of the few states that has yet to, there, there may be two or three states left that, that have not adopted the triple K standard. And so we anticipate it being something that is going to be on all new manufacturers and required on certain rechassis after a certain date. So, that's, that's what the manufacturer, and that's what our salespeople are telling us. So we thought we'd get ahead of the curve. Not only that, I mean, it's, it's starting to show savings with work with comp claims, and, and it certainly makes the employees' job just a little bit easier by the use of the technology.
All right. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
DMS capital improvement, 263. Ambulance rechassis, 25,905. Total request, 25,905. Ms. Tippred.
Second.
Motion approved by Jessica, second by Larry. All right. Any discussion on that? We, this is just a continuation of what we.
Right. So the ambulance replacement fund would normally cover this, but with the addition of the auto-loading system, we fell short. Like I said, it's a $40,000 add-on. We were short in the replacement fund by about 25,000, so we're just making it up out of, out of this particular fund.
Questions? Roll call.
We, and what I was going to say, the other thing, too, is we could have done this equipment, done it all out of that, but we wanted to try to absorb as, as much as we could out of the replacement fund, because we felt that's what it's, that's what it's for. This is a, this is an add-on piece of equipment, but we just didn't list it that way because it's bolted to the truck, so I felt like it's part of the chassis.
Roll call.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
And I have just, I have one more thing just to bring up to your attention. We have been working with Jim Fluke and the IT department on upgrades from Windows 7. Majority of that is all done. Last year, there was money appropriated out of our capital improvements fund to get this project done. We had about, I think it was about $4,000 worth of hard drive and computer hardware equipment that needed to be changed, or that was changed at the end of the year. We did not receive that invoice until after January, but it was backdated. So, I will have, because that money came out of our capital improvements fund, and at the end of the year, it would have gone back into that without it being actually spent, even though it was, I'm going to come back before the finance committee and council again just to reappropriate that money that had already been appropriated last year. It was something that, I, I knew Megan was working on getting the invoices, and I think we were at Dell's timeline to, to get that stuff done. And I know Megan's working with Donna on, on getting that done. But I think the, the best way to do that is, has been suggested, just to bring it back up for, for, through the finance committee to be reapproved.
Okay. Is that you guys have agreement on that, auditor's office, Donna?
Yeah, it didn't come and talk, come in and time for us to, so, the appropriation died.
Okay. Okay.
We have to have it in our office by a certain date, or they're going to come through. They just could be wasting time, so.
Okay.
Basically, just read, reappropriate what they already appropriated.
See, uh, finance committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, CASA. CASA capacity building grant, 198 per time, $40,552. 171 FICA, $324. Total request, 40,876.
Before you guys motion on that, do you want to read, have these CASA grants sent?
CASA donation fund, 197 per time, 22, oh, I skipped one. Sorry, let me go back. CASA grant, 211 office supplies, 2,500. Total request, 2,500. CASA donation, 197 per time, 22,440. Total request, 22,440. CASA JCAP pilot project, 171 FICA, 8,295. 172 per, 12,200. 173 insurance, 12,400. 174 life insurance, 270. 175 long-term disability, 850. Total request, 34,015. Move to approve.
I do have one adjustment I'd like to request. On the 4102, I was hoping we could cut that amount in half from the 22440 to the 11,220. I did explain in fight, in the finance meeting, and I'm still learning with all these grants, too. It gets so confusing, that I do get an original lump money with that United Way grant, and then from there, I get like increments of a thousand at the beginning of each month. I think it would be more appropriate if I did half the amount of the 22440 now, and then came back in six months and requested the appropriation of the remainder, 11,220.
Hey, I need a motion from council on all, all four of those funds with the reduction of 11,220. And fund 4102, 0005.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion from Jessica, second from, I didn't catch it.
Larry.
Larry, okay, all right. Any discussion on that? Questions? Roll call.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Family court, or family recovery court have a change. It's now going to be 101 program coordinator at 17,900. Then add account 171 FICA for 1,370. Add account 172 per for $2,005. Total request is 21,275. Ms. Tippred.
Second.
Got a motion from Jessica, second from Jane. Any discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Thank you.
Project Income, 101 executive director, 750. 102 assistant executive director, 7,000. 108 financial manager, 750. 103 community service certificate, 750. 104.
Donna, let me, let's go ahead and motion to approve these. You can't, you don't need to read through all these pages, so these are all community corrections.
Yeah, let me tell you, I have one page, one change. If you go down to the DOC grant, go down to where the very first one says A141. That's really B141.
Everybody got that? That's the first one in DOC grant.
Yeah.
Can we get a motion to approve Project Income and DOC grant? As submitted on the financial, so.
Second.
Got a motion from Ryan, second from Jessica. Any discussion on that? I know there was a question in finance about that we wanted to get a, to get an answer on, on the, it'd be the assistant executive director position for 7,000. On there, was there, was there an increase in that line item? Or was that the amount that community corrections had agreed on for that position?
There was no increase from last year. We tried to get the DOC grade to pay for it, and they did not approve that, so we had to switch it to the 2501.
Any other questions from council? Roll call.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Now, before we move on from that, Donna, do we need to do encumbrances before we make the, make the motion?
I don't, I don't know that it's necessary. Do you?
Okay.
I mean.
You needed us to approve the encumbrances, though.
Yes.
Okay, so we can go ahead and make the motion and then approve the, okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, we're ready for that motion, then.
I'll go. Motion to approve transfers and financial agenda and to amend salary ordinance with like reductions.
Second.
Motion from Jessica, second from Ryan. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Do you want to approve the encumbrances now?
Yeah, let's go ahead and do that. Encumbrances were emailed out to everybody, and these were line items that were encumbered last year. I'll let Donna go explain those, and we'll do that motion to approve.
There.
Actually, let's get a motion to approve first.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, second by Ryan. Go ahead, Donna.
We just, we list all individual accounts that have to be encumbered, so. And they're listed by fund, so if anybody has any questions, otherwise, it's just one long encumbrance, which is down a whole lot versus last year's.
Any discussion on that? Roll call.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Okay, let's see, back to. We have two resolutions. They, they're listed on your agenda in reverse order, so we'll start with a resolution of Delaware County Council for a reduction of funds, and that's community corrections. And that one's 220-001. I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Larry, second from Jessica.
That's the paperwork that was also on your desk this morning. That shows each account has been reduced, in case you guys wanted to know. It equals the total on the resolution, but I wanted to show you what individual accounts. That's what the state did not approve their budget. They turned in the state in March, and when we did budgets in September, they still didn't know what the state was going to approve. After you approved the budgets in September, they were notified like in October, right? And state didn't approve what you did. So, those are the reductions that matches what the state approved for the budget.
Well, one of the, the major changes that happened with community corrections last year, too, was going from fiscal year to.
Yes.
They were, they were asked to extend their fiscal year six months and then start with a new budget. So this is the state and local community corrections getting used to all this, I think. Is, uh, it's, it's a big jump, and, and I think it'll be easier to understand, for us anyway, that they're on a calendar year versus a fiscal year. Let's see, we've got a motion to approve and a second. Any discussion on those? Any questions on any of that? Okay. Roll call, please. Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
And the second resolution will be 2020-002, and that's a resolution authorizing the temporary transfer from rainy day fund to the county general fund, 1,000. I need a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion from Jessica, second from Ryan. You want to talk about that?
This is the same ordinance that we've done the last, I don't know, three or four years. Hopefully, we won't borrow any of it, but I wanted to go ahead and go to approve just in case we do have to borrow, and at the last minute, you know, all of a sudden. My, my, because we have not applied for one this year, so that's completely out the window. My only concern is this year, we have three pays in April instead of May. When it's in May, I don't have to worry about it, because I do an advance draw. Not knowing how our revenue may not come in that we've anticipated, we, I could have to borrow some in April just to get us through to do the advance. We don't have to use it when I, I mean, we're definitely not gonna borrow it, but I just wanted it to go ahead to be in place, just in case. April's what worries me because of the three pays in the month, so.
Well, and if we do borrow from it, we have to have a paid back by the end of the year.
Right, has to be paid back by, like, you know, last year, we borrowed it, might pay the back when I did December 7.
Okay. Any questions? Roll call, please. Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Okay, anybody have any new business on council?
I guess so, Brian.
The other thing I did forget, I know I, I've kinda got heavy on these grants, but I didn't get to actually, or I forgot, to make reference to, if we can all make sure these grants are filled out correctly. From what I'm hearing, there's repercussions for other people if they're not filled out correctly, so I think it's something that we need to be aware of when we're filling this stuff out, okay?
Steve, you want to, you want to say anything on that? I mean, the, the issue that we talked about in the committee was state board of accounts, sometimes dings the, well, always dings the commissioners and the auditor's office for this, and not necessarily where the department, where the grant came from. So you guys, more or less, take the heat on this, and you got anything you want to talk about on that?
Well, the commissioners passed a resolution, and so last year was the first full year where they have to apply for a grant through the commissioners' office, and then they pass an ordinance for each grant, and so, once they do the audit this year, we'll see what's still lacking, and then we'll try to make some corrections there.
Can you pass these down to whoever moved one down the road there? Okay. I think the last thing I've got is liaisons for the board, for the boards. I've, I've kinda gone through all these, and we've taken some of them off that are somewhat repetitious as far as appointments on this, and these are just liaisons, they're not necessarily appointments to these boards. But we kinda split up the, the task, so that one person has, has burden with all the responsibility of trying to keep track of all these boards, because there's quite a few of them. But I did find, and there's still a little more, that I will want to do maybe throughout this year on, on getting, because we have our set of appointments, and some of these were duplicated on, on the liaisons, and for the same people that were serving on the board, so we don't need them on, on both. I'd rather have them appointed as voting members of these boards. But this is where we're at now, not too many changes, really, and if you feel like you, you can't handle a liaison, or would like to be on a, a different one, I have no problem with changing, changing these around at any time, so. In reality, we're all liaisons to all the board, so you're welcome at any, any public meeting that, that we have that has, has anything to do with the board in the county, so. Other than that, I don't know that we need approval on that.
No, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
We lost a, a good employee from Delaware County going to the city of Muncie to the clerk's office, from the recorder's office. So, Mellie, would you introduce the new county employee in your office?
I would be most happy to. I hated to lose Ruby. That is, without a doubt, that was a great loss, but the silver lining is, I now have Jan Smoot as my chief deputy, and I'm really excited. She's been in, and she's catching on really quickly, and she's gonna be a real asset to that office, as I know Ruby is gonna be a huge asset to the city clerk's office.
Jan, you're gonna have to stand up.
Really shy. So, I'm, I'm thrilled to be here. It's not anything that I ever expected, that I'm really enjoying it, and, and it's nice to learn what you do, and everybody's been great, very welcoming, so.
Jan, tell them what you were doing before.
I've been a nurse since like 1983, so it's a little direction change, but I feel like I'm still helping people, I'm just helping them in a different light, so.
Sounds good. Any, any other comments from anybody in the audience? You guys all good?
I have one thing, it's not necessarily council-related, but I know I brought this up before. Indiana Blood Bank, they've been contacting me again, so just a friendly reminder, if you can donate, the Blood Bank bus is at the mall over by Outback on Saturday than Monday, so if you're someone who can donate, please hop on the website and take a look and register to, to donate, so.
Okay. Seeing nobody else coming up, I need a, a motion to adjourn at this point.
So move.
By Larry.
Three different people.
Larry, Brian.
You guys are gonna have to look for it. Motion by Larry, second by Ryan. Roll call. Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Denise?
Thank you all.